I'm being seven o'clock, I'll call the Wednesday, May 16th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Just so you're aware, this meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be posted on the internet and shown on local access television. If you'd please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have Aviero Stotin LLC doing business as Throwback Burgers, looking for a name change to Throwback Cafe and Grill. Tracy?
So this is, they have a common BIC license, there's no alcohol license here. They are changing their DBA to Throwback Cafe and Grill and they just want to kind of get the word out there that they do breakfast and this name is more reflective than just a burger restaurant.
And that's the restaurant that's down at Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes.
Okay.
Any concerns Tracy?
Nope, they're not making any changes to their corporate structure right now. They indicated they may do that over the course of the year during licensing season, but they're not doing it at this point. So we just need to update their license and you have that before you decide.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to grant the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, accept or review the meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2018. Is there a motion?
Motion to review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And approve the meeting minutes from April 4th, April 18th, and April 23rd, 2018.
I can approve the minutes of April 4th.
Okay, yep, you're great. So we'll do April 4th first. Eldon, if you want to make a motion for your-
I'll make a motion, either effect, April 4th.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and April 18th and April 23rd.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the board meeting calendar for the second half of 2018, page 30.
Generally, go ahead. I was going to say-
No, that's okay, go ahead Eldon.
We, we write up, you know, a program there for our meetings, but subject to change, it could, there could be some changes along the way, sometimes we have to make some changes. So, but if anybody has any problems with what's on there right now, you know, or any, any conflicts with any meetings that you wouldn't be around or what, you know?
And just as an FYI-
Maybe you can just take it and review it and put it on the next meeting, you know, I mean, whatever your pleasure is.
I have, I have my calendar with me. No, I don't have my calendar with me, but I can send-
Maybe that's what you could do, you know?
David, did you have something?
Yep, just as an FYI, if you could refer to November, you will say, you'll see that we normally meet every two weeks. However, the second meeting normally scheduled in November would be Thanksgiving Eve and, you know, that wouldn't make a lot of sense to be here, so we are proposing November 7th and November 14th. So it would be a back-to-back week, just because of the way that the calendar works. Again, as Selectman Marrera indicated, we can always change it along the way, but based on past practice, that was what we were recommending.
Okay, I think it makes sense to accept this calendar and then if we need to, throughout time, we can make changes.
Yep.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, FY19 appointments. Two weeks ago, we took it under review, the list. We do have a number of boards with vacancies. Tracy sent me the list, I forgot to bring it, I was going to read them, but I believe those are posted on the website, are they?
I'll post the updated list.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. So are the, is there any discussion on the appointments on this list that we are approving tonight?
I have no problem.
All good?
I can barely read it, but I'm okay with it, yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appoint Paula Bethany as Conservation Commission's representative to the CPC. I believe the previous representative is no longer on that board, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint her?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Paula Bethany.
Second.
To the Conservation Commission.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approved motions, make recommendations, and assign readers for annual town meeting. First, I believe Ben has something.
Yes, we at the cable station thought it would be nice to dedicate just a small, maybe have a little small 15 to 30 second video just in memorial of Jim Benson before the meeting started. Talked to David about it and just wanted to bring it before the board and if you have any questions.
I think it'd be a great idea, he certainly has done a minimal job for us, you know, we miss him dearly.
Yes, we have a lot of footage from all the past town meetings and we're just looking to try to put together maybe just little snippets from it.
Yeah, that would be great. All right.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you Ben.
So I think the thought process is at the beginning, when the meeting starts, is you would run it at that point?
Yes, we'll probably set it up with either Tracy, whoever's ever running the projector, probably we can probably either set up through a little small video link or give it to whoever's running upstairs in the sound booth.
All right, thank you Ben. Okay, so moving into the warrant articles. So what I plan to do is quickly go through them. Went through them a little more in depth at the last meeting, so if we just go through, go over who's going to be presenting them, a lot, majority of them are presented by other boards or other individuals. And then I am, under the assumption that we'll recommend the majority of the articles, so I think it makes sense to wait until the end for a vote and if you'd like to hold any, if there's any that you want to discuss or object, we can go, we'll take a motion for the ones that we approved and go back to the ones that we want to discuss in more detail.
Before we go, I'd just like to say one thing about, you know, maybe, I talked to David a little bit, you know, we're all interested in, you know, to speed up the town meeting and we know how important it is to answer the questions that the people ask out there, you know, when they come in. And what's happened in the past there, either one of the selectmen has to get up, or David has to get up and we do the best we can. But we were talking and we said that maybe we'll make it as part of when we negotiate with the department heads, because we get quite a lot of department heads, but we don't get them all. And I think it's very, very important for the department heads today to answer the questions that come up on their budget, because they know, I think that will move the process fast, faster. And what I'd like to do, I'd like to, you know, if we will send a letter out to the fact, but I think next year we'll have to give, we'll make a requirement for them to be there. That'll be part of that, to be there at least, you know, once or two nights a week. I don't think that's asking too much of them. And I'd like to make that a motion, that, that we ask them with a nice letter and then next year we'll probably have to get into it a little bit deeper. But I think it's very, very important, I think that will move things along a lot fa- faster when it comes right from the department head. Then the board can still speak on, you know, their wishes too on it. How does the board feel about that?
So, I, to clarify, are you talking about the articles or more so the budget?
Talking about it.
Okay, we don't have a requirement that they be there?
At this point, we do not.
Okay, is there an issue with us taking that vote with it not being on the agenda?
I wouldn't, you don't need a vote, I had already spoken to Selectman Marrera that what I will do is I will send out a memo. He recalls that when I first came here, it was something I attempted to implement at that point and I think that what we should do is in the future is attempt to incorporate into individual contracts. But at this point here, you don't need a vote, I don't think we should take a vote. I just understand where Selectman Marrera was coming from and I don't hear any objections, so I will send out a memo.
Yep, I think it absolutely makes sense to have all of them there.
Yeah, I think it does, because it's their budget and, you know, they're there to answer the questions on their budget.
And for the-
And I think that would, you know, to speed up the process a little bit, because, you know, we do the best we can, you know, answer the questions for their budget. David's got up many, many a times and explained this thing, but sometimes we don't get the whole thing, you know? I think that's, okay.
And I agree, I agree with Eldon, the fact they go through, they spend time going through each line item. They know the invoices they're receiving from the various vendors they received them from and if there's any competitive, competitive vendors out there or not. So we can't explain in that amount of detail or answer questions as thoroughly as they should be answered. So I do agree, they should be there, absolutely.
Next year we can make it as part of employment, you know, when we do the contracts, you know, I mean, put it in there.
Yeah, well, I'm sure if David tells them that they'll be there, I would hope so.
Okay.
Thank you Eldon, okay, moving into the articles. Article one will come from the floor. Article two is the Board of Selectmen to report to all town officers and act their own. Is there someone who would like to read those?
And just to be clear, Article two and Article three are consent articles, so you'll see inside that box, it says that the move that the town considered to approve, both two and three. So whoever moves that one, that's what you will read and we will hope to be able to do both of them at the same time as we have historically done.
Okay, do we have a volunteer for two and three?
It sounds easy, so I'd be glad to volunteer.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Okay. Article four is DPW, so Chris will do that one. Article five is Board of Selectmen. This is to establish the salaries for the elected officials.
I'll take that one.
Okay. Article six will be Finance Committee. Article seven will be Board of Assessors. Article eight will be DPW. Article nine, Board of Health. Article 10 is CPC. And same for Articles 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 14 and 15. So those will all be CPC. Article 16 will be Scott Golda, or the OPEB Liability Trust Fund. Article 17 will be the Police Chief for the Web Task Force Grant. Article 18 will be the Police Chief for purchasing a new cruiser. Article 19 will be the Police Chief for purchasing a K-9 vehicle. Article 20 will be the DPW for the Sander. Article 21 will be the DPW for the Dump Body. Article 22 will also be the DPW for the Bobcat Planer. Article 23 will be the DPW for the Garage Doors. Article 24 will be the light at the intersection of East Center Street and East Street. That is a Board of Selectmen article. And Eldon, David has told me that you have asked to-
Well, the only thing is, like I said, I didn't very much involved in that and is that, is that total amount, does that include the engineering too?
The engineering, we've already funded, I believe, right?
We've already funded that, and that's, that'll be more than, than the five, no?
The engineering's already been-
That's the total amount?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yep, and with a 10%, that includes a 10% contingency, so the bid was actually 470 or so?
Yep, 471.
What, what do you mean at 10% contingency, what's that?
So the lowest bid came in at 471 and so what our contract engineer recommends is, is that you budget a 10% contingency in case there's any problems during the project. So you don't just budget the 471, because as he said, when you're milling a road, you hit a seven-foot boulder in the middle of the road, you've got to move it, but there's no additional money for it. So they wouldn't be able to do it without another town meeting vote. So what you do is you budget in 10%, and then hopefully they don't run into any issues and then you just don't have to borrow as much, you borrow the 471. If they run into a $10,000 over, you need 481, we don't have to go back, you just borrow the 481. So, but it's 10%, from what I understand, 10% is the standard number that you budget for.
And this is purely a borrowing article?
That is correct.
Thank you.
What we're trying to do is we're trying through the Senate to get the money back through the, because the Senate has a certain amount of money there, but we won't know until later on whether we get that money or not. So we're borrowing upfront right now.
That's correct, and just so you're aware, Senator Timolty did put an amendment in for us for $250,000. He filed that on Friday, I spoke to him today. He told me that they will be in negotiations next Tuesday. It'll take a couple of weeks before the Senate version comes out, then it will have to be reconciled with the House, so we're probably not getting a good know until June or July, but you are correct. It has been placed before the Senate floor.
So we're trying to get the money to pay for it. It's very, very important that we do it, we have one fatality there, they keep on knocking that blicker down, it's there and there seem to be a lot of accidents there before there's another fatality. That's why we want to try to move forward with it, at least get one down. We got other intersections that we're going to have to talk about and try to get on the tip lists and, but that's one, it's dangerous there.
I agree, it's a very, very difficult intersection.
Okay, I will take that.
Okay, so that one will be Eldon. Article 25 will be Chief May, that is for new protective clothing. Article 26, also Chief May, this is for a skid unit for one of the trucks. Article 27, Library, this is for the replacement of the flat roof at the library. Article 28 will be the Municipal Building Needs Committee and that's for $30,000. There isn't anything anticipated at this moment for that, but that's just money that they hold in case anything arrives throughout the year. Article 29, Board of Selectmen, so this is $100,000 to put away towards sidewalks. I'll gladly take this one unless someone else wants it? No, good, okay. Article 30 will be the School Department.
And I'm sorry to interject, you will see that the move right now is to pass without action. It turns out that the MSBA is not going to be able to act in time and that there are some qualifications we may not meet on this, so the school is working through it. So at this point, rather than tie up the money, speaking to the superintendent earlier today, she has said that they will pass without action, meaning that we will not take any action on it.
Okay, thank you David. Article 31 is also the School Department, this is for the School Resource Officer. Article 32 will be the Town Clerk. This article is for change with the Animal Control Officer Bylaw. Article 33 is Board of Selectmen and this is to establish a ban on, on non-medical marijuana establishments in West Bridgewater. So is there someone who would like to present this article?
Maybe we should take it in parts, because they're, and they're-
There's, yep, so, nope, so Article 33 is the ban, then the follow, following articles will only be presented, I believe, if Article 33 fails. And I think one of them is actually a Planning Board article.
Article 35 would be the Planning Board.
Yeah, so Article 33 is just, is the ban.
I'll, I'll take the ban.
Okay.
We're going to still have to go through them all and whether we approve them or disapprove them or, you know, if you got one that you approve, but you're still going to have to assign out, you know?
Well, if we ban 33, if, I mean, if Article 33 does not pass, if it's banned-
Right.
Then we don't even go into Article 34, correct?
That's correct.
Or 35.
Or 35.
Right, I understand that.
I'll take 34.
Okay. And that is the 3% sales tax. And so moving on.
A lot on there, huh?
Yeah, that's a long one.
Yeah, page 20 is where you'll see the motion.
Thank you. Okay, Article 35 is the Planning Board and that will be to establish the zone for non-medical marijuana if it does, if Article 33 does fail. Article 36 will be the Police Chief and this is to limit the public use of marijuana. Article 37 is the revolving funds and that is a Board of Selectmen article. Is there anyone who would like to do it? I have no problem doing it. Okay, I will do 37.
And if I may, I just want you to know, so that we were prepared at town meeting. Usually these are consent articles at the beginning of the town meeting. However, a recent legislative change is you have to create a bylaw for all of your revolving accounts. So Article 37 creates your bylaw. Article 38 then sets your upper spending limits, which is what you've always historically done. You will continue to do in the future as consent articles, but for this year, we had to place this after the bylaw, because you couldn't vote on it prior to the bylaw passage.
Okay, thank you. I can also do 38, the, establish the upper limit for the revolving articles if it works. Article 39 is the Conservation Commission and this is to establish the ability to lean for stormwater. Article 40 is the Police Department and this is, this is to establish revolving funds for revenues that the Police Department and I believe it will be other departments as well that can-
Just police and fire, it's an insurance restitution account if they get hurt on duty.
Okay, thank you. So that will be the Police Chief and finally Article 41 will be the Planning Board.
Okay. Are you going to-
Is there a motion to approve the readers for the articles?
Is there any articles that you don't approve of?
Yeah, I guess what I would ask, if you could take an article, I'm sorry, take a motion-
Take them one at a time.
To approve the motions and the readers as just presented and then we can also, then we can discuss about which ones you are recommending or not recommending.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now are there any articles that anyone would like to go over, potentially vote not to recommend? Or just discuss in more detail?
I'd like to discuss the article for the Safety Resource Officer.
Okay.
And I guess just go on record as saying the reason I voted against the school budget and against what was recommended to cut was because I had suggested reducing the budget, school budget by a larger amount and with hopes that they would include the Security Resource Officer in their budget. But then we have an article for-
78.5, I believe?
$75,000?
$78,500, it's on page 13.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But then we have the, the article. I guess I don't know how that works, let's, let's just say for sake of argument that-
Are you, are you in favor of the position?
The position, absolutely.
It's how we finance it, is that-
Absolutely, it's the financing.
So you think that the school should pick up the whole thing, is that-
I do.
Okay.
I completely understand where you're coming from. I think that the school increase this year was astronomical. I understand Patty's concerns though. But for this artic, I mean, I don't think it would really make sense to recommend not to, to vote down this article just because of the funding. I'd recommend looking at the position and whether or not you're in favor of having the position, but I completely understand where you're coming from.
And I, and I do agree, 100%.
And one of the things I think that I wrote, you know, the other way there was the fact is that Patty wasn't consulted and used the, the School Committee and it was after the fact and I don't like to, you know, you know, cut anybody's budget without knowing or talking to the, to the people involved and that's one of my reasons. And that's one of the reasons for, for me, I was thinking, and, and we do similar things with the, with Chris Iantelli as far as the ads go there, you know, we, we share things together, see? And then when they were in, they explained if they don't have courses and where the money is going, it's needed, we not only have to pay the buses, but we, we have to pay for the courses and that costs a lot of money. I just didn't think arbitrarily I was going to cut her budget, you know, without talking to her. That's where I was coming from, or the School Committee, because they had already been before us, you know? That's, that was one of my reasons and, and I, I just thought that maybe that I would vote for, that we would share in the expenses on that. And I still feel that way.
Okay, I don't have anything further on that to-
I have to do that.
Okay.
You're going to take, are we going to, how are we going to present it?
We'll do them all at once. We'll, we'll wait and see if there's any other that we oppose and then we'll, we'll try to do one motion at the end, yeah. Are there any other articles that either you would like to discuss more?
The marijuana article.
Okay. 33?
Yes.
To ban or not to ban?
Yes, to ban or not to ban and, and then the whole zoning to go along with it, I think, and, and this is through no one's fault, it was timing. I don't think the residents had an opportunity to get any more information about this. How soon before town meeting do, does it, do the residents have access to the articles?
Access as far as viewing them?
Viewing them.
14 days.
At a minimum, right?
No, it's, the warrant's posted 14 days in advance and according to, to your bylaw.
Oh, okay, but yeah, I mean, these draft versions, I guess, are, have been posted online for-
Well, and we've been discussing it since February.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's been, from a Board of Selectmen level, if people are watching the agendas and coming to the meetings and there is going to be a Planning Board public hearing as well, there has been at least discussion of it and I think that the board showed really good leadership on this issue when you placed non-binding advisory questions at the election to at least inform the residents that these votes were going to be coming up as well and to, and to poll them, so. I grant you, it'd be nice to, if we could, you know, it's funny, because we have more ways to communicate now, but yet we're less effective in communicating. And I feel that way, is that we can't always cut through the clutter and get all the information out, but I do believe that over the last handful of months, we made every opportunity to get as much information out there as we can. And a lot of surrounding towns have already taken these votes and just through osmosis, there must be, our population is probably no different than others, they're reading the news, seeing what's on TV and understand that these are votes that are happening in, in all of the neighboring towns. It's only a matter of time before it happens in ours.
And I, I don't disagree with you, but the, the issue is everyone's working, their kids have sports, so the time in the day to devote to what's going on in town is limited. So as much pushing out of the information as we can do, I think is important. So the, what I was getting to is could, as soon as the articles are available to be published, could we push that information out onto the town's website? So that it's out there for the residents to see as soon as it's available. There's, and, and just, I, I hear acronyms all the time being spoken and I don't understand half of what people are saying, because I'm not familiar with the acronym. So I think I'll put myself in as, as a resident and say, some of, some of this is confusing. Some of the residents thought that the non-binding vote was actually a vote. They didn't understand it was more of an, we need your opinion. They didn't understand it was more of an, we need your opinion. So they, they thought they were voting again and I, I've even heard, why are we voting about this again? Why isn't it an article? Didn't, didn't, weren't we already done with that? So it's our job.
You say they were confused?
There was some confusion and unintentional. I thought the questions, the opinion, non-binding questions were great to involve the town in making a decision. I just don't, I just don't think we should expect them to know as much as we know. And, and I'll tell you right now, I don't know as much as you two know, or David, or any of the other staff. I'm still learning, so maybe they're a lot smarter than I am and know more than I do. But I think if we push the information out there, give everyone another opportunity to know this is coming up at town meeting.
Yeah, well, I have a slight, maybe not a slight problem, but, but a problem. We did, I invited him to the Old Colony Planning Council, committed it there. And they're unable to actually ask a lot of the questions that were asked there, that kind of bothers me now. They're running the show. So it, it seems to be like a, a money issue. And I, I faced him one day and I said, what are we gonna realize if we, if we did? I think he quoted me with thirty-five thousand dollars.
I was saying for every one million dollars of revenue, the town receives thirty thousand dollars.
It seemed to me, and then other people are coming up to me and say, hey, listen, it's gonna be all around us. Why don't we take advantage and take the money? And I understand it was quite a thing with the finance committee the other night, but I wasn't there. And, and this is, but, but the only thing, like I said, and I think Denise, you did say, of course, I know it was a non-binding. If the people didn't want it, you, you were gonna vote the way the people went, that you said right in the candidates night there.
Oh, I.
Yeah, because if the people, now it's a non-binding, but it will come up. And you feel, you still feel the same way if the people don't want it?
I will support what the people want.
I'm the same way.
But, but again, I, I want them to be.
But you want to have all the facts.
I want them to have all the facts and all the information and, and I want it to be as easily accessible to them as possible. I know they can reach out to get it. But again, working all day, children have sports, everything going on in their life. As much as we can do to push the information out.
We, we sometimes do, you know, like refer to voters, but we don't like to do that because they, they elect us and they want our opinions and how we go, so, you know, and how we feel, you know, and then they can decide.
And this is, it, it's such a difficult topic because there's so many different perspectives of it. But I don't think it's just a, you know, I know it's maybe thirty thousand dollars.
I know it's getting late, Dave, but is there any way that we can have some kind of a public meeting that they can?
Yeah, it's on May twenty-third at the planning board.
Oh, so it is coming up?
Well, they're gonna be talking about zoning and I guarantee you during that conversation, it's gonna be, do you want to have marijuana, do you not want to have marijuana?
Publicize it out, you know?
So May twenty-third?
May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, okay.
It'll be downstairs, planning board, I believe it's seven o'clock, but that's off the top of my head. It might be six-thirty, but I think it's seven.
May twenty-third, okay.
So we, could we push that out onto the town's website and then I'm sure others will pick it up and share it onto other websites?
And it's on the meeting calendar as well.
Okay.
Okay, so is there any more discussion?
Question from the floor?
Go ahead.
The agenda won't be available until two days before the meeting. So nobody's gonna know what the topics are for that planning board meeting until a minimum two days.
Correct, I mean, now it's, we've let people know through this method at least, I mean, spread the word, I guess. We can post, they, they do typically post early.
Well, the other thing is, is that because it's a public hearing for zoning, it required fourteen days of notice and posting. So that means it went into the local newspaper, it's also downstairs at the town clerk's office. Grant you, most people don't read the newspaper or go by the town clerk's office. But a lot of other people probably don't check our website either. But we have posted fourteen days in advance in accordance with state law.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anything else specific to whether or not the board wants to recommend or not recommend this article?
I, I'm sorry, Anthony, I didn't hear, were we going to post about the May fourteenth meeting onto the town's webpage? Did somebody agree to do that or?
May twenty-third?
May twenty-third, thank you. Planning board meeting, could we put that on?
Yep, so it is on there, well, it will be.
I'm sorry, not at the, the town's Facebook page, that's what I meant, I apologize. I keep saying website, I meant the town's Facebook page.
Yep, we can do that.
And the same thing with the articles, the town's Facebook page.
Yep.
Because residents do tend to share information from there onto other sites.
Yeah, Trace would be glad to do that, I'm sure. Okay, back to the articles.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on this article, thirty-three?
I have none.
One other question about this article, and again, because it's so important and it has different parts. One of the things I, I hope we can do is get clarification, how a resident from the floor might be able to, and this may be the wrong word, amend an article, even if it's not this article, but other articles.
Yep, so if a resident, the resident, when somebody moves it, the moderator will ask, assuming a second. And then the moderator will ask if there's any discussion on it, residents are able to take the microphone. If there is something about this article that they want to amend, they would just say, Mr. Moderator or Ms. Moderator, I move to amend the article as follows.
Does, does that have to be in writing?
And the town clerk will then request it to be placed in writing. So that person will then verbally state, I want to add something, strike something, delete something, whatever the case might be. And then that person will place it in writing, it would go to the town clerk, assuming that there is a second, there would be discussion and then a vote.
Okay, anything else?
Done.
Good, okay, are there any other articles that anyone would like to discuss? No?
I have none.
Okay, is there a motion to recommend all articles being presented?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discuss June twentieth meeting, this is actually my request, I will be out of town on the twentieth. I am asking that we could cancel this meeting, I'm not sure if we will need to have one. But if we do have it the following Wednesday, same time, June twenty-seventh. David, do you think that we'll need one?
There's not usually a lot of business at the second part of June, but I, I just, I won't know. I, I just, I can't answer.
Is that the last Wednesday or?
It is. Twenty, it is. So it's gonna run to OCPC nine.
Yeah, I know.
We could do the week prior if needed.
Before, prior?
Again, I mean, we can, I, I think if, if it's okay, I mean, obviously I'm in contact with the chair all the time. If we need to call a meeting for that previous Wednesday, which would be the thirteenth, then, you know, if we need to, we'll call it and obviously post accordingly and do what we have to do.
Is that all right, if we move it prior?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move it to the thirteenth?
Okay, so.
If we, if we need it.
So to cancel the twentieth and?
Cancel the twentieth, I'll make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Serge's WB Mason contract for paper supplies. David, is this just the typical, they went out to bid?
Yeah, we go out to bid every single year, WB Mason won the bid, we do it on an annual basis. And so all you're doing is voting to award the contract that WB Mason has presented.
And this is roughly how many towns that grouped together to do this purchasing? Twenty towns?
Twenty towns.
Okay, do we need a motion on that, David?
Ah, yes, please. So a motion to approve as presented.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve as presented?
Oh, oh, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to sign, annual town meeting?
Mr. Chairman, you did skip one as Jay write a, write a first refusal.
Okay, three twenty-five South Elm Street. Write a first refusal for chapter sixty-one B land, it's about fifty-five hundred square feet. And we've received letters from the planning board assessors and ZBA, is it?
Conservation.
Conservation, not to purchase this land?
That is correct.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect, not to purchase?
I'll make a motion not to purchase.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And vote to sign annual town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, are there any communications or reports from board commissions or town officials? And public comment period, is there anyone out there who has anything that they'd like to bring up? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, John Dupree, three Catano Circle. I'd like to just raise the issue of the topic of the executive session. The recent ruling by the appellate court on the open meeting violation. You indicated that there was still consideration to appeal that third decision. And, and my question is, how much legal fees have been spent chasing this so far?
I don't have that number, David, do you know what that is?
I can ballpark it, obviously I don't know off the top of my head. But I've already had a conversation with town council about this because I have entered into a verbal agreement with him that excluding the cost of the actual hearing, they are not going to charge us for any additional prep work on it. I will say we've probably spent about twenty thousand dollars at this point. And the cost of the hearing date would probably be about eight hundred dollars to a thousand.
And do you have a ballpark on how much it would be to take an appeal to the Supreme Judicial Court?
That is the answer.
That's the answer?
Yeah. Yep, because they're not going to charge you for any briefings, in fact, I have volunteered because there are certain arguments that I think that have to be made on a practical, from a practical standpoint. I, I firmly believe, I just think that you just read exception two and they're linking it to exception one. And, and so, and with that said, I have told the attorneys that I would help them write the motion, they're gonna have to do all the legalistic work. But I want to minimize the cost, they are not going to charge us to file it, but they will charge us on the day of the hearing because if the Supreme Judicial Court takes it, and as you know, there's no guarantee they will. If they take it, then it would be right to pay them because they're gonna be in court all day. If they don't take it, then there is no additional charge and it dies.
And also, you made comment, Chairman Kinnahan, in the newspaper that the town administrator is currently engaging all department heads that report to this board in their performance evaluations, is that accurate?
That's correct, yes, the, the board no longer does any performance evaluation on its own.
Is he also negotiating their contracts?
He negotiates their contracts on our behalf, so we do enter into executive session to discuss, a lot of the times it's how much we're willing to pay in other terms, vacation, other benefit terms. And then he negotiates with that employee on our behalf.
And during those executive sessions, do you discuss professional competence?
We do not.
In regards to the, to the price that you're all willing to pay?
Since this ruling, we have not.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else from the public?
If I could just follow up, I read the article in the Enterprise and the one thing it seemed to not have is what the consequences are of the AG's current decision, like, are there any?
There are no fines, so there, I don't believe there really are unless, am I correct with that, David? Other than we get a ruling against us, I don't believe there are any.
And that's just ruling against you, it doesn't have any impact on the town?
It, it changes how we can proceed thereafter as far as doing performance evaluations.
And do, does the, does the board of selectmen want to change the way they're currently doing?
We haven't discussed that yet, that is on the agenda for executive session. So we, the board has not discussed it yet together.
Well, that's not on the executive session.
Exactly. Oh, it's not?
No, no, the executive session is just whether or not we want to appeal it and what our strategy session is in making the appeal. What I believe Mr. Cream's question is, is that, is it the board of selectmen's contention that we are no longer going to do performance evaluations through the board? And I think that the answer is yes, because we're doing an open session and quite frankly, I don't know excluding a school department because they're required by law. I am not aware of a municipality in Massachusetts that does performance evaluations through a board in open session for what I would determine to be all the obvious reasons. So I feel is that what all municipalities have done is started to act in a less transparent way and have now deemed me to be the one responsible where there is no minutes, there's no collection of information. You can't public record request my personal notes as to what I do in evaluations. Evaluations are private anyway and during those contract negotiations. Versus if we allowed the board to do contract negotiations in executive session. And I think that it's foolish that you can't say, I want a raise, why do you want a raise? I do a good job and then that triggers the fact that you just broke the open meeting law. That doesn't make any sense. Everybody always has to justify why they want a raise. You're not gonna do an open session, you go into executive session, you have that conversation, now it's captured by minutes. Anybody can review the minutes at a later date and you could do it three years later, thirty years later. I think it's more transparent if we were to do that. In any event, this is the current ruling, that's the current interpretation. They have to make a decision whether they want to appeal it or not.
And I, and my point was just, what's the point in appealing it if we're not gonna be doing things that way anyways? Just move on, since there are no consequences.
So I'll speak to that only because two of the members are new. Because I believe that at least the way the board was constituted in twenty fifteen is that they would have preferred to continue to do contract negotiations between the board and the department head. It was as a matter of this ruling that they have now deferred that to me. And so I think that if we were to reverse this, it would give them the flexibility. Now, they may not choose to use it, but it would give them the flexibility to do it. And I do think, quite frankly, is that it's a little unfair that a department head, unless they're evaluating in department, in, in open session, can never, ever, ever have a conversation directly with the three of them in reference to their contracts unless it's an open session. And I don't think there's too many people that would want to have evaluations and contract negotiations on their behalf in front of the public, whatever the jobs they're respectfully doing. So I think it's just unfair to those people as well.
I would have to disagree with that statement, David.
That's okay, I mean.
I mean, a, a lot of what you just said could be done in open session. You could have a department head come forward and say, here's my presentation, this is what I've done, this is what I plan to do, and this is why I think I should get a raise. Boom, end of open session, go into executive session, negotiate the contract. You've just satisfied the open meeting law without any further violation.
And I understand the argument, except that if the board member wants to be critical and they're only critical in executive session and not open session, then somebody could argue that they weren't transparent on that point. And again, it's gonna be difficult to be critical of people when their employees can see, other people can see, it's on camera. And thirteen years later, that person then could be held accountable for something that was said at that point. But I fully understand what you're saying, most of that can be accomplished. But I do think that in open session, it's very difficult for everybody to have frank conversations. It just, it just is, it's human nature.
Well, they're all municipal employees. Right, I mean, that's, that's the nature of the beast at this point.
And again, at the end of the day, this is exactly why I am not aware of a municipality that does it in open session. There is no doubt that Mr. Dupree procedurally is correct. But there's a reason why nobody else does it. Because everybody's uncomfortable with it and it's very hard to be critical and frank when the whole world is watching and it's on television. And so they've all, I mean, I don't, you name the town, I'll tell you who does it. And I know that they have deferred it all to their managers, town administrators, as this board has done.
Thank you. Anything else from the public? Go ahead.
I wonder if the board has any way to affect whether the other boards allow the cable news to film their meetings?
We do not, I mean, other boards, some have voted to allow it, some have not. I mean, as you know, one board in particular, it's been coming up more recent. But we don't have any real authority to direct the town's TV department to film the meetings. I think it should be up to the boards individually. I do think that boards should allow it, I think that it's great for the public. I think that they should all be videotaped. That's my opinion at least, I don't know if anyone else has anything on that?
Is there a bylaw change or something that can be enacted so that it's, it's no longer optional? And we have a hand wave over there?
Go ahead, Jake.
We ask all the boards and who wants to be filmed is who we film. We currently film school. school committee, conservation, and selectmen, and finance committee. But we leave it open to the boards. If they wanna be filmed, they can. If they don't, you know, we're not gonna force our way into a meeting if they don't wanna be filmed.
So, I will tell you, a handful of years ago, prior to me becoming town administrator, I know that this board sent a letter to almost all boards and committees and requested them, and some obviously said yes, and some said no. Let me ask you, John, just to pick your brain a little bit.
Go ahead.
If we passed a bylaw, my immediate reaction is, is that I'm not so sure that a bylaw can bind a committee. Yeah, I...
Here's the thing, though. Under the open meeting law, we'll go back to this, any open session can be audio and video recorded.
Correct.
The chair cannot refuse a request to video and audio. If enough citizens request of cable access to record the assessors meeting, and that's what we're talking about here, it can be done, and the board basically has no right of refusal. They can't, unless they're disrupting the meeting...
What, are you saying you won't do that?
No.
I never said I wouldn't do that.
Okay, no, I'm answering.
Yeah, we can do that. We just leave it to the preference of the board.
I think out of respect, I think the cable committee has chosen not to just intrude on it.
Even if the whole town came to you and said...
We could do that. If that's what you guys want, you can speak to the cable manager. That's not up to me, that's not my call. I'm only access coordinator.
So, if a majority of, a significant number of residents wrote in or called and said they wanted that meeting to be videoed?
I don't see why not. We're down to film any meeting. It's up to the people and the boards.
Out of curiosity, does it cost the residents or the taxpayers anymore to have another meeting recorded?
Well, no. We do have cameras in this room and the downstairs meeting room. If we do it in any other room, we would have to bring our own equipment. So, if, it would make it a lot easier if, like, say, the board of assessors met in the room right next door, then we would already have cameras in there.
But if that's inconvenient for them, you would still be able to...
We'd still be able to film, yes.
And it wouldn't cost any additional money to the taxpayers. Okay, thank you.
And again, the chair cannot refuse.
Yep. Anything else from the public? Okay. Moving on to the town administrator's report. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just placed this next item on the agenda, just as an FYI. A couple of months ago, the question was posed as to whether or not MEMA, which is Massachusetts Emergency Medical Association, or FEMA, which is the federal level, was going to offer any financial assistance to businesses and/or residents with the storms that hit in March. Unfortunately, no state of federal money has been made available. However, the Small Business Association, which is kind of quasi-federal, they have low-interest loans that are available. There are certain qualifications, but looking at the interest rates, a lot of them are one to two to three percent. So, I just wanted to do that, make it as an FYI, in case somebody wanted to take advantage of it or attempt to. The next is, is that we're required on an annual basis by May first of every year through the EPA to file what we refer to as an MS four permit, that basically is saying that the town is complying and making every attempt to comply with stormwater management as set by its regulations, and that we did file it accordingly, both with the Mass DEP and with the EPA as well.
Thank you, David. And is there anything else before the board moves into executive session?
Could I just ask a question about five A, David? Because to me, it's a little confusing that it's the small, the SBA or the Small Business Association that's offering the low-interest loans to residents?
Yeah. And there are, like you said, they're a quasi-federal association. They get some funding from the federal government. So, they're there to try to help startups or start businesses. But apparently, according to, according to the press release, I didn't do that much homework on it, but according to the press release, they're saying it's gonna be made available to residents as well. So, however they determine that to be actionable is on them. But the memo says that not just businesses, but residents, again, meaning certain qualifications. I don't know what those are, but at least it's an opportunity in case somebody needs some type of an access point.
That's great that you researched that, found that, you know, and bringing it to everyone's attention. Is that something we could push out to the town's Facebook page too? A link and get that information to some folks that had problems?
Okay. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session. We will not reconvene into open session for purposes of conducting a strategy session for collective bargaining, specifically the library union, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, specifically the town of West Bridgewater versus the Attorney General Division of Open Government, since in my opinion, as chair, strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. And we need a real call vote?
Ferrari, yes.
Yes.
Kinahan, yes.
Please, you have to raise that, please say raise yes.
Raise yes.
Kinahan, yes. We are now in...